Through the council's website, it's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Please can I request all mobile phone and other such equipment to be switched on to silent as not to disturb the conduct of today's meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from Town Hall staff. The assembly point is at St Jude's Square. Also, can you please note that the appendices for items eight and nine are not available to the public and press. They contain exempt information described in the paragraph three of Schedule 12A to the Local Government Act 1972 as amended. If members wish to ask any questions or discuss any of this information, we will need to ask members of the press and public to kindly leave. For the benefit of the webcast, please can each Finance, Performance and Policy Committee member introduce themselves? So I'll start with you first, Gareth.
Gareth Slater, councillor for Saudi.
Good morning, good afternoon, sorry colleagues. Councillor El Doherty for Manor Castle.
Councillor Rob Bannister for Grace Park.
Councillor Martin Phipps for City Ward and Green spokesman for the committee.
Councillor Diane Hurst, Member for Richmond Ward.
Chef Hamid Ekklesov.
In this chapman was for Ward.
Councillor Mike Levy, West Ecclestone Ward and Deputy Chair.
Thank you very much. We have got apologies from councillor Terry Fox. Councillor Hurst is substituting. And we also have apologies from Abdul Qiyum and councillor Bannister will be substituting for Abdul. Item two, exclusions of press and public, I've already mentioned items eight and nine, they are not available to the public and press because they contain exempt information. So if members do want to discuss the information, we will need to ask members of public and press to kindly leave at that point. Declarations of interest, is there any declarations of interest? No? Item number four, minutes of the previous meeting, this is on page 11 of your agenda pack. Councillor Doherty.
Hello. It might seem strange to colleagues that I'm commenting on the minutes as I wasn't actually at the previous meeting, but I did watch it online because I was interested in this particular agenda item around the outcome framework. And the minutes record a couple of different things that didn't seem to me to be the nature of the conversation that had happened. Specifically that we've agreed to do a task and finish group on the anti-racism. And my understanding from having watched the discussion was that the task and finish group was going to look more widely at the outcomes that had been put forward in the framework and work together with officers and members to try and revise those. So I just wanted to clarify that, that item of the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Doherty, you are correct. At the meeting, it was agreed a task and finish group to look at the outcome framework. So we'll get that amended in the minutes. Thank you for raising that. Apart from that, are we all agreed? Yeah? So everything else is fine? Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, public questions and petitions. We have not received any public questions or petitions. Members' questions, item number six, we do not have any members' questions. Moving on to item number seven, which is a work programme, you can find this on page 19 of the agenda pack. Is there any questions councillor Doherty?
Hi, sorry me again. I just wondered, one of the other things that had come up in that discussion was that we had a forward intention to review the outcome framework at, I think it was quarterly intervals, but that doesn't appear to have made it onto the forward work plan. So I just wondered if we could update that? Thank you.
That's absolutely fine councillor Doherty. That was discussed at a pre-agenda meeting. Fiona unfortunately is off sick today, but that was agreed to go on to the forward plan for the next meeting. Councillor Everie?
Yeah, just in relation to that, at what point will we be able to link the performance data with the finance plan? And can we highlight that so we know when it's happening, please?
Phil?
Good afternoon, Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services. So the plan is to link those two together councillor Everie. The next quarter to update will be the last one, we hope, that is not together. So you get the financial update in November and the performance update in December. We then expect them to be coming together.
Okay, so are we councillors Slater?
Hiya. It was just, well, it's fairly self-explanatory. It's just on page 22, it was saying the equality's objectives, performance would be coming into October. And then page 27, it's saying November. I assume the fact it's not here means it is November. Yeah.
I think that will be coming to the November's meeting. Sometimes if reports are not ready in time, they do get moved. Okay, so any further questions or comments? No, there is anything else? Are we all agreed? Thank you very much. Moving on to item eight, this is on page 29 of the agenda pack. And this is the disposable of land at Fitzwilliam Street. And the presenting officer expected is Alan Seasman. Thank you, over to you Alan.
Thank you Chair. This is, as the Chair just said, is about disposal of land at Fitzwilliam Street in Devonshire Quarter. It's coming to committee because this is a disposal where it's not been subject to a competitive process and where consideration, the amount received to the council in excess of £300,000. So that's why I forced the finance committee. By way of background, this site is within the sort of Devonshire Quarter area. A report on all things in Devonshire Quarter went to TRC Committee last June, setting out our approach in there, which is about trying to develop a mixed demographic, high quality neighbourhood in a prominent location. In line with the council's aspirations for the area, developers agreed to purchase a leasehold title from an existing owner in the area to enable a comprehensive residential scheme to be developed. For this scheme to be developed, it also requires the sale of the council's neighbouring freehold land to the developer, along with the land that they've already agreed to buy on leasehold. Part of that land, which is, sorry, it's not that bit, the purchase of the leasehold interest makes this buyer a special interest purchaser as an adjoining landowner. The committee has asked to approve the sale of the council's freehold land in accordance with the agreed heads of terms and set out in Appendix B, which forms the closed section of this report. Milton Street's one of 23 priority neighbourhoods, 23 distinct neighbourhoods and set out the city centre strategic vision. Priority for neighbourhood frameworks have set out how and why we want to try and develop these sites out. And a variety of developers have already delivered residential schemes and continue to do so. Most of the remaining land without planning permission is within council ownership. This site was, one of the sites was recently developed, was the former Eyewitness Works on Milton Streets, which was developed by Captain Centric. There's 97 designed by departments, duplexes and townhouses across three buildings, which were Eyewitness Works, Salon Works, which were both Grade II listed and former Cutlery Works. This development is adjacent to Eyewitness Works, as referred to as Fitzwilliam Street, and is comprised of a number of different plots. These are shown as plots one, two and three on the attached plan in Appendix A. Captain Centric ventured into agreement with FW Wallace to purchase a long lease of plot two, and this provides the opportunity to bring together all the respective parts of land into a cohesive development site. Officers have negotiated heads of terms for the sale, and these are included in Appendix B. These include price, timing and conditionality of the sale of the land for the council's freehold interest. This conditionality includes getting a suitable and acceptable planning permission, and also provides for the potential for the council to step in and take the land back if the land isn't developed in the form that we want it to be. The reasons for this decision is that we want this, the outcome of this is to deliver new residential development within the city centre and repurpose vacant and underutilised brownfield land. The development proposal will bring forth the continued regeneration of the Devonshire Quarter, help attract additional football and be a benefit to the city centre. The proposed disposal will also deliver economic and financial benefits, as outlined within this report, generating a significant capital receipt, council tax revenue and a still contribution to the council. So that's the report in summary, and I'm happy to take any questions on that.
Thank you very much for that councillor Phipps.
Thank you Chair, thank you for the report. Just had a few comments if that's okay. So I think the sale of the land being conditional on the planning permission, I quite like that, I think that's a good way of moving this forward. I think that's a welcome step to help ensure that it's the right quality. And just thinking about that site in particular, when plans do come forward, it would be good to see that the heritage aspects of the site are preserved, because there is a number of them. I know Eyewitness Works has tried to preserve some of the aspects there, so it'd be good to see heritage aspects preserved. What I'm kind of conscious of, and what we're conscious of as City Ward councillors when we get large kind of developments coming through, is that we don't need like tonnes of small studios, as I think you've alluded to, that we need the right mix. And the city centre already has a lot of small studios and a lot of flats that fall short of the South Yorkshire Design Guide sizes. So it'd be good to see from this, good quality, sustainable and affordable housing, not just affordable in name, because I know sometimes that term's thrown around, but the prices don't match that. See the right variety and size of bedrooms to enable families and long-term like residency in the city centre, because there's a lot of turnover in the city centre, because the accommodation's too small, people don't stay there for a long time, not enough access to green space. And that it's sustainable to address the climate crisis, so we're seeing stuff like equivalent passive house standard and the right amount of solar panels, so more than just like the bare minimum to help meet our net zero aspirations as the city, and also the sustainability aims of our local plan. And just an aside, something that I'm always conscious of personally, when I hear like plans for new large, I'd say this as well, is that I think privacy is often underrated when we look at these applications and these plans, especially like soundproofing, which is like really forgotten. But if you're living in a flat where you can hear everything your neighbour's doing, they can hear everything you're doing, that's not great really, but just for practical purposes. I think that'd be something to be considered and hopefully to develop as well if this goes through.
Thank you councillor Phipps. Councillor Mohammed?
Just to say, I will be supporting this. It's a sensible way forward, linking the sale with planning permission. I think it's really important. This site I know well, Beav Works is a place I know well on Milton Street, so our colleagues, we had an office there for a long time. And it's a very sustainable development, and it fits in with ambitions of the city to kind of build houses and buy, well not houses, but accommodation, sorry. And it should help, you know, the redevelopment of the moor and that other area, heart of the city in terms of increasing the density of the city. So I think it's a good thing to support Chair, so I'll be definitely wanting to support this when it comes to the vote.
Thank you. Is there any councillor El Doherty?
Thank you. Similarly, like my colleagues, I think this is a really great development, and it seems like a really positive move forward for a part of the city that we can be giving this new housing development to. I just had some questions, particularly actually, I wanted to support many of the comments that councillor Phipps made, but I'm conscious that our role in this finance committee is not necessarily to be kind of opining on the nature of housing. So my question was about, you mentioned that it had gone to TRC last June, I just wondered if there have been any other kind of committee guidance or steerage that you've been able to get on this particular development, conscious that there are many priorities like that, that effectively at this point in the process are probably too late to kind of bring to the fore.
There's no real steer from TRC Committee, because the report that went there wasn't just about this site, it was about the wider neighbourhood and how we're going with that wider neighbourhood, most of which is largely built out, but the remaining plots within the area are in council ownership, and we are endeavouring to try and increase the amount of affordable units in there and maintain the design quality as much as we can. Most of those issues though fall into the planning sphere and aren't something we can control from a landholding perspective, although we do what we can.
Councillor Doherty?
So I just wanted to ask one follow-up, because as you'll know far better than I do, obviously questions particularly around affordability and around what we're able to put into this development are quite closely linked to the price that we as a council are willing to sell this land for. And there are lots of trade-offs that would go into that in terms of the type of thing that we hope builders will be coming forward with, as well as what we might be interested in selling it for. So I just wondered if you could perhaps in a, not now, but in a separate briefing for us, it'd be really great to hear what kind of considerations the team puts into you, how we make sure that we get the best overall economic value for the city, as well as obviously getting the best price for the land that we're looking for.
Happy to do that.
Thank you very much councillor Everie.
Yeah, just to say, we have to look at these things holistically, because we can't end up with piecemeal developments across the city, or it's not ridiculous. So there are occasions when we will be looking to do resource or trade-offs to make sure that we get the right sort of development in the right place enough and support the way the officers are going about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also like to support councillor Doherty's comments. I think it'd be good to understand when officers are making decisions and looking at this holistically, some of the considerations that you have. I agree with comments made by colleagues today, this is a positive development for the city centre. And, you know, I think using, building new residential developments on underused or repurposed buildings or brownfield land is a positive for the city centre, but I think we do need to have a discussion around affordable units as well. So if later on we can organise a briefing for all committee members to have that discussion, that'd be very welcome. So thank you very much. In terms of today's report, can I ask, would you have recommendations? Are we all agreed? Yeah, that's all agreed, thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to the next item, item number nine, this is on page 47 of the agenda pack, disposable of land on Hoyle Street. And again, Alan, you'll be presenting this one.
Thank you Chair. Similar to the item we've just discussed, this is disposal of councilhold land to a special purchaser. In this instance, the special purchaser is Homes England. And the reason we're doing this is that the council, together with through the kind of Sheffield Together partnership, have been working with Homes England, South Yorkshire, Mayor or Combined Authority and others to look at developing catalyst sites across the city. And the first of those catalyst sites to come forward is the kind of Furnace Hill and Neeps End catalyst site, where this site sits as a key piece of that. We've done a development framework for this to guide the principles of development moving forward. And planning thinking on this has moved further forward than on the previous site. And as much as within, what we're trying to do here is to assemble sites across the piece and procure a developer partner who will build out those developments across Furnace Hill and Neeps End in line with the development framework that we've developed so far. A report on Furnace Hill and Neeps End, setting out all the detail of this, is due to go to TRC at the end of this month, and further details will be in that report. But the key principle here is about the timetable we're on and where we need to get to. A pin notice has been issued for, to attract a developer to do this work, and we're moving to procurements of that developer through Homes England's framework towards the end of the year. The councillor, front and centre of that, we've helped develop the development framework, we've set out the criteria within it, and the way in which that will be judged is very, very much on quality and not just on price, which is an important thing to consider. This site is an important site, we've negotiated heads of terms for the sale of that, which again are included within Appendix B. The majority of land is based on an independent valuation, we contend with that evaluation, we contend with the terms in the heads of terms, we now need to agree this so we can move into legals and be transferred. Thank you.
Thank you for that Alan. Councillor Hurst?
Thanks Sahira. Thank you for that Alan. I do welcome, this is an extremely important site and it's very prominent in the location. And because of that, it's right and proper that we should move forward on something that will act as a catalyst. I think I have to support previous sentiments, and I know we're nothing to do with design and planning and the Planning and Highways Board, but such an important site should support the design principles that we want to bring forward in our, in our plan, both for quality of design, for the sustainability, for the affordability of properties there, and for the access to open space. So I just wanted to put that marker down. But I also think because it's such a prominent site, it's also the opportunity to have a bit of fun. So I look forward to seeing those, to seeing the outcomes. It would also be really rather nice as well Chair, if we could have a joint briefing with TRC or a briefing formal and about the proposals for the area, so that we can understand when further disposals come forward, what role, you know, we are playing in the reshaping of the city, if that's possible.
Thank you for that councillor Hurst. And I think that'd be fine for us to have a joint briefing with TRC, I think we've been discussing that amongst ourselves in the finance briefing, so that we got a bit more involvement in the process, rather than it coming to us right at the end when we can't really make any changes to it anyway. Councillor Phipps?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, completely agree with everything councillor Hurst just said, and kind of echo my comments on the previous one for this. For this site, I'm just thinking, as I think Dan kind of briefly touched on this, but it mentions open space, like 5,000 metres squared of open space between the two new sites. I mean, green space, public green space is really desperately lacking in Furnace Hill, Neeps End and Callum Island area. So that'd be, it'd be really good if we could add some green, public green space as part of this, I guess we'll see when the plans of developers come forward. And I mean, just generally, when we look at disposing land on large schemes like this, I guess we're focused on it providing housing, but there's a whole load of infrastructure that that housing needs. When we're building up areas like this, like community space, could do with more of that in the area. And even stuff like, we hear a lot from residents around Callamane and Neeps End, like don't really have a really local GP there. There are GPs in the city centre of course, but not in that area. So I don't know how we're planning to kind of tackle that. I mean, I imagine these plans probably won't contain that provision, but it'd be great if they would. But it doesn't tend to happen in that way. But maybe that's a kind of downside of how we deal with our developments in this manner. I don't know if you could add anything to that. And just a quick comment there, it's good to see that we're going for above the minimum requirement of affordable housing, and we're going for the 20%, that's really welcome.
What would Sahira, in terms of infrastructure and other things, is that most of what has happened elsewhere in the city in the past has been unplanned, to a large extent it's been piecemeal on a plot by plot basis. And what we're trying to do here is more comprehensive development to consider some of those issues. Whether there's a need for a GP or not, despite what residents might say they want, is part of that discussion. And so the sufficiency of some of those things is part of a broader mix, I think is what I would say in response to that. So the answer isn't yes or no, it's kind of like iterative.
Councillor Hurst, you wanted to come back?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your indulgence. It was just really something that councillor Phipps said there, because it's so important that open space is publicly accessible, green open space, we've all heard the debates in the past about open space, green open space being privatised and not being accessible. And we know how important access to green open space is for people's wellbeing and mental health. So with such important partners in place here, it's just a plea and to put a marker down that the open space is accessible and is not, we're not privatising it, that it's usable and accessible by all. Thank you.
Just to respond to that, I think we in particular understand that, that's why we've built Pounds Park, that's why we're trying to build Castle Gate, and why we're trying to get greater access to Parkwood. Completely agree that, agree that. And through the development framework, through the planning process, the right and amount of open space will be included in the broad stretch of the development, and wherever possible, that will be publicly accessible. It might not be a big new park though.
Councillor Chapman?
Yes, thanks Chair. Just because I'm also on the planning committee, I do, can answer a couple of questions here. Firstly, for installation, so you don't hear what your neighbours are doing, there are regulations now that say you've got to have a certain amount of protection, not only above and below, but by the side. So new property should be built without that problem. And with regard to doctors and all the other infrastructure, schooling, dentists, which is a big sore point at the moment, it depends on the size of the development. And as I understand it, the developer doesn't have to think about anything unless he's building something like over 350, 400 properties, in which case each time you get a little block of 300, they don't think about it, and the next one of 300, they don't think about it either. So somewhere along the line, the council has got to get together to make sure this provision is put in for doctors and dentists and schooling. Because you'll find wherever it is, they might say, but there's a school over there that's empty, so on, sorry, all your kids are on a bus and they're going there. But things have got to change a little bit.
Thank you councillors Slater.
Hiya. I especially like again the 50% mixed, sorry, 50% of no more than one types, you should get a mixed thing there. My only question, and this might be again rookie question, what does open space actually mean? Because a car park's an open space, what does it actually mean? Particularly, could we try and get children's park or something like that down there? Because I used to live down there and there is next to nothing of that type down there. Could we, is that something we could be asking for?
I'm straying out my expertise, but open space is accessible and usable as open space, not a car park. A car park is a car park. Well, other than that, I couldn't tell you much more than that, because again, it moves into the realms of being a planning consideration and what's suitable and usable. And sometimes that will differ in terms of the types of needs of the residents as well.
Councillor Phipps?
If, I've got a question on the restricted part, if that's okay.
We'll finish off the questioning and comments for this bit, and then we'll move on and then we'll close it. We'll pause the webcast as well for that bit. So is there any further questions in regards to this? No? Okay, so there is a question for the bit that's excluded to press and public, so if we can pause the webcast, there is anybody in here from? So thank you very much for your comments and questions. I think the development framework, which this time stipulates a minimum of 20% affordable housing, I think that's really good, is exceeding the 10% requirement in the Sheffield Plan. So this amount of affordable housing will be supported by further Home England grant in addition of 67 million already secured. So I think that's a very positive for Sheffield. And the recommendation is for approval, so are we all agreed? Yeah, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you very much Alan. Moving on to item number 10, which is the capital approval month five, this is on page 65 of your agenda pack.
I'm Damien Watkinson, I'm the Finance Manager in the Capital Team, bringing forward the petitions and variations to the capital programme and any associated grant funding that's come forward this month. As usual, I'll run through, in order to give a brief summary of each of the schemes that's come forward. So under Transport, Regeneration and Climate Change, first we've got feasibility works on the number and location of some new traffic counters to be installed, to improve data, to monitor the existing impact of infrastructure changes and to inform future interventions on the transport network. At Bartby Road steps, there was initial aim to replace these with metal steps, that's not been possible under the current budget allocation, and the team, the Poyet Rights Way team have identified that the steps hadn't degraded further, so they were content to leave them in their current state at the moment, so that 82K is returning to the local neighbourhood transport plan allocation for allocation elsewhere. elsewhere. The full wood 20 mile an hour zone has had an increase in its final cost of 27K following finalisation of design, and that additional 27K is required for it to go forward to construction. The Rother Valley parking scheme has an increase of 143K to a total of 501. This is to improve parking, parking management and improvements for pedestrians at Rother Valley. The increase has been due to the length of time the scheme has taken to be developed and consulted upon. And the original estimate didn't pick up some of the complexities that have been encountered on site. The Transport, Regen and Climate Change Committee have been briefed on this and are aware of the additional funding required. The same's also true at Meadowhead pedestrian crossing, where we've had an increase of around 127, 128K to 342, to deliver two pedestrian crossings at Meadowhead School. The original estimate didn't take into account that one of the crossings was going to be a parallel, which adds segregated cycling and pedestrian crossing. So that's been part, a large part of the increase that was required on that scheme. There's three 20 mile an hour zones that are currently at design stage and they're moving to detailed design. So this is going to be an increase of 62.5K across those three sites to 101.5. It's not increasing the overall allocation for the schemes, but they're seeking to conclude detailed design now so that they have a better cost estimate for their outline business case stage, which hopefully will prevent, you know, upgrade the forecast at a later stage. So doing that detailed design now is hopefully going to give us a firmer price moving forward. Clough Dyke, Deep Car, there's some remediation works to be done there, up to 1.5 million. Environment Agency funding's been secured. We're unblocking and replacing an existing culvert to prevent flooding to properties in that area. Under the Future High Streets Fund, we have an existing agreement with Montgomery Theatre, which is proposed to increase by a further 100K to address access issues there. There was an original agreement in place, the costs have escalated on that. Montgomery Theatre have secured additional funding from the Youth Investment Fund and they were seeking some further match funding from SCC to finalise that work. There was an allocation made for access arrangements to Montgomery Theatre in a previous budget amendment a couple of years ago that hadn't been drawn down on, so that's now going to be utilised for that purpose. Under Community Parks and Leisure, we've got a play zone being developed at Ecclesfield Park. There's been a number of developments there, including the tennis courts and some public rights away works. £245,000 being secured from the Football Foundation against a total budget of 327K, which is going to generate a new 2Gs playing area, associated benches, bins, bike racks and floodlights. It's going to be a bookable space but also available for free use and community use. Under housing, we've got a third round of the Local Authority Housing Fund. We brought the acceptance of the grant here last month. This is now to allow the expenditure of that grant. Grant's 1.5, the spending total is around 3.1. The match funding is actually being able to be used from rounds one and two, which you will see in the packet, although they're down as a reduction. So we managed to deliver the outcomes and outputs from rounds one and two without utilizing all our match funding. So now we can just use that to match round three. So there's no additional council resources required to deliver those, that support for Afghan and Ukrainian refugees resettlement. The Gleedless Valley Master Plan, there's some refresh work being done, which is actually revenue work, but the major allocation for the Gleedless Valley project is within capital. So how the housing revenue account works is that they will just commit less funding to capital next year and use that instead to deliver the Gleedless Valley master planning works of £300,000. Following on from works that were done as a feasibility study of around 20K at Chesterfield Road on a retaining wall that was collapsing, the solutions being identified to that and it's going to be a total cost of 705K, so there's an increase of 685K to repair this collapsing retaining wall. Education children and families, we are using special needs capital to replace the lift at Netherthorpe Primary School, which is beyond economic repair. Everybody knows that site, it's a Victorian building and dining's on the first floor and for accessibility issues, that lift needs to be in working order. Lynxfield School is having windows and doors replaced. When work began, there was, well, just before work began, there was an invasive survey done and it identified asbestos at a site that we weren't aware of prior to the initial design of the works. So there's an additional 160K to dispose of that safely. Then on the Strategy and Resources, the Rose Garden Cafe, which has reopened now, there's further feasibility work to be done on the works that will be required to address all the structural issues that are still outstanding at that site and undertake a full refurbishment. So the 79K have been identified to undertake that feasibility work. We've got some allocations that the Essential Compliance Maintenance Team wants to put to one side for certain elements of work. So these are responsive works that they might have to urgently but are of a capital nature. So they've identified some general repairs, dams and water courses, heating, mechanical and electrical, roofing and compliance works. And they're putting allocations of either 250K or 200 against each of those headings. And like I said, this is when we have urgent works that are needed to be undertaken, which can't wait for the full approval of a capital budget scheme. So we've got an allowance there to address any immediate health and safety issues, like I say, of a capital nature. And we've provided guidance as to what works of a capital nature would represent. The closed churchyard boundary walls scheme, there's been an addition to that. It's not strictly a closed churchyard boundary wall, but an area near Lowfield School, which is in council ownership, has got boundary wall issues. And so that's been added into the contract for that particular scheme of works. And also there have been some design changes due to listed building status at those churchyard walls. Then I think finally we're on the grants that we are going to be accepting. There's the Environment Agency grant for Clough Dyke, which I mentioned earlier, for up to 1.5 million. We're also accepting 4.5 million from the Combined Authority for the Transforming Cities Fund magnet a Meadowhole cycling route. And then finally, at the issuing of the 100K grant to the Montgomery Theatre, which again I mentioned earlier, as part of an adjustment to an agreement we already had in place under the Future High Streets Fund front door scheme. And that's everything. This month.
Thank you very much, Damien.
You'll have to tell me if I speak too quickly.
I swear you didn't breathe in between that. Okay, so we've got a couple of questions, councillor Chapman?
Yes, thank you. Right, Damien, on page 72, the Barby Road steps, if these aren't safe, why aren't we doing it? Why has it been taken out of the programme? I mean, you've written, it's written down here that we were worried that we might get possible insurance claims because they're not safe. And you've taken them out of the budget. And lo and behold, a few months' time, we've got an insurance claim. I mean, it's going to cost us twice as much to do them. So I don't know why they've been taken out of the budget and not been repaired. If they're not safe, they want repairing. And then on page 73, 74, about the Rother Valley, Rother Valley parking scheme, I wondered why this has been increased? Because really, they're starting work next week and doing it. So why do they need the extra money? What are they going to spend that on? Because really, it should all be done and dusted by January. So they shouldn't really need any extra money, it should all be accounted for.
On Barby Road steps, obviously, all I can do is to take instruction from my transport colleagues who have informed us that the, the steps hadn't degraded as much as they thought and that they couldn't afford to do the work that was, they thought would be the, the required, you know, the ideal upgrade, if you like, to melt. So they've just said they're allocating that elsewhere in the public rights of way issue. So I can take that query back to them in terms of that. In terms of Rother Valley, yeah, the, the, yes, they are starting, they're going to be starting work on that, but it's going to cost more. And that's, this is the additional money they need in order to be able to deliver that. That's what they've identified, that the work that's going to go on through till January is going to be costing more than the initial estimate was by that 143K.
Is it the fact that the council takes so on to do things that Rother's being caught up with inflation?
I think... Potentially. What I understand is there has been extensive consultation on this one and it has taken a while to get through that process. That's my understanding of what's, what's extended the design period. There has been a lot of consultation in that area.
Thank you councillor Slater.
Hiya. Two questions. One, on the page 80, which is the new properties we're getting. Have we got sort of, are we making sure we're getting a mix there? So we're not just getting one, you know, all two bedrooms or all three bedrooms, something like that? And how do we decide the market rate that we're getting? And then on page 83, we're taking 300K from the, what was going to be CapEx expenditure into revenue. Will that be it? Is that then giving us a fully developed master plan that we can crack on with? Or is this just a step in the process to get to that?
In terms of the acquisition of the general needs housing, that's undertaken by our, our asset management team, who, we have general acquisitions that we do across the council anyway, for general needs council housing. It's, be the same process that's used there. Houses are acquired at market rates, they will seek to buy back former council properties, bring them back into ownership if they become available, simply because we do have the data on them about how to maintain them, et cetera. But yeah, they are looking for, they will be looking for the, the right properties in the right areas because they do have those, those asset management plans. So that will be what they're seeking to deliver. The other question about the Gleedless Valley Master Plan, I don't know, is, to be honest, answering in terms of what that might take to deliver a full master plan. All we've identified is that at this point, the work that's been done can't be capitalised because it's not to specific assets at this point, it's, it's about that overall master planning. So that's why we're just freeing up the amount in revenue to be able to do that so that it doesn't, it doesn't cause a further overspending revenue. Whether that's 300K is going to be sufficient to develop the full master plan for that, I, I don't know at this point. Again, I can ask the Gleedless Valley team on that, but I know those discussions are happening around the Housing Policy Committee as well.
councillor Mohammed?
Mine's on page 74, 75, and it's around how robust initial kind of assessments are. Because you're asking for, not you personally, Damien, but the team's asking for a budget increase of 128,000 and a budget of 200,000. And, you know, there seem to be some oversights. And it's just, just a question or comments is about how robust the initial stuff is. So TRC are agreeing to do things and then coming back going, oh, crumbs, you know, we need another 128,000 here and another, you know, and then if you look at the 20 mile an hour zones, particularly the Locksley, you know, it's been increased from 27,000 pounds to 40. You know, that is a huge increase, you know. So it's just, just a genuine question really, where you flag it with the team to say, how robust is your initial assessments when you're agreeing stuff and then you're coming back afterwards? Because clearly, there's always an opportunity cost. We're putting more money in there and that means we can't do things elsewhere, would be my comment. While I've got the floor chair, clearly welcome the Rose Garden expenditure. I remember when it first closed, the huge outcry there were for the public when we first had that meeting outside the then closed cafe. So any work that needs to be done, you know, is welcomed on that. And question on Gleedless Valley, how much was spent on the previous master plan? Can you get the team to find out for us? Because a lot of work was done to it for quite a long time. And now we're gonna take some capital out, put it into revenue, so how much more? So that'd be quite a useful thing to have. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I know colleagues have pulled together what spend we've had on Gleedless Valley previously because there's been some other questions about that. So I don't think that information is readily available, so that shouldn't take too long to get hold of for you. Yeah, we, we've been working with transport colleagues because we've been, obviously, we see these business cases before I come and present them to you. And we've been working with them around that and asking those questions around getting those more robust estimates at an earlier stage. And I think part of the, like I said, part of the 20 mile an hour zone work is, is trying to do more detailed design earlier on and, and ask for the right amount, this is what I've been asked, ask for the right amount of money at the early stage so that we're not, you, you come and ask for 40K to design it instead of 20, so that we're not, so when you come back, you come in with me, to me with a scheme for 300K that's not going to go up to 400K, rather than spend 20K designing, say it's going to cost 200, and then have to come back for a further one. So they're, they're the conversation we've been trying to have. And it's, it's just coordinating colleagues between sort of like the Amy pricing team and our, and our in-house design teams. So yeah, we're, we're aware of that and that works ongoing. And hopefully, I want to see that improve as, as we go forward and see less of those increases. Some are always going to be inevitable. I mean, there will be some cases where, you know, they hit status, stats, works that they didn't know were there, you know, the cables or there were, or issues with drainings that weren't there. You're never going to get away from that totally in, in the capital world. But yeah, certainly when we're designing something, the, as long as the design itself is, is robust, we are trying to help and move forward on that. Because obviously, it's not, it's not good for me to be coming back here and always presenting that these are costing more.
Thank you councillor Phipps?
Thank you, Chair. On the Clough Dyke remediation, I just wanted to comment that it's good to see the investment in flood defences and it's good that the council successfully secured that outside funding for this from the EA, that's a good one. Oh yeah, thanks for the reports and everything, Damien, I meant to say that. Yeah. It's a mammoth task, isn't it? You do a great job. It's, I was also reflecting, it's a bit of an invest to save on Clough Dyke because if we're preventing flooding there, then it's better for the area, the residents, and it also means the council spends less money dealing with the effects of flooding, pumping it out. So hopefully we'll see some improvements from that from financial point of view too. Just following up on people's questions about the Gleedless Valley Master Plan, I was just wondering, have they provided any time scales when these kind of initial redesign proposals will be produced by?
I'll double check that, it will be in that business case, I'll, I'll double check and get that.
councillor Levery?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Damien. Page 78, Ecclesfield Park Play Zone. I think this is the first time I've ever known Ecclesfield lead the way in South Yorkshire on a national initiative, but we are. So we're delighted to have the first play zone. It's not just any ordinary mugger. This is quite, very much larger, allows private hire, so it can be booked and also as well as community use. So yes, we're leading the way in Ecclesfield. Hang out the flags.
Thank you. That's great councillor Levery, well done to you guys. Okay, so thank you. There is any further questions or comments? This report does contain recommendations for approval, are we all agreed? Yeah, that's fine, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. The next meeting of the Finance Committee will be on Monday the 18th of November at 2pm. Thank you very much for your attendance.